I'm going to have the candidates if you would. Each candidate, I would like you to go to the front of the stage and tell the people why you're running for office for city council and what you plan to do. Who wants to go first?
I'm Mike Myers, running for city council, running up from Royal Beach, I'm here since 1975. I moved from East Shore, Maryland, from farm to beach, and love it ever since. You can't do any better than that. I'm ready to talk about some issues with where everybody else is, and the light all came out, and I look forward to speaking with you later.
My name's Matthew Gordon, lifelong resident of the South in Royal Beach. Been here for my whole life, board the Red Street Hospital, I'm one of the railroad stations, anxious to sit around here. Anyways, people say, "Why are you running, Matthew?" And I'll give you a little quick instance as to why I run. Couple of years ago, we voted whether or not to build a performing arts center. We voted yes. My question is now we decide we're going to build a children's museum in the library, where's the performing arts center that we voted for years ago? I haven't even seen anything about it. Why did we get the vote for the children's museum in the library? I say, rather than officials are out of touch with us, and it's time to put four more people in there, and the mayor, community council members, and I'd like your vote on number seven. Thank you, God bless.
Hello, my name is Dan Blum, and I'd like to say that what my banner says, that I'm conservative, ethical, financial watchdog. I want to take care of your interests, stop all this taxing and debt, and do the right thing for everyone, because the problem we have right now is a perfect storm of crime, beaches that are not clean, financial irresponsibility for the budget that's increased forty-four million dollars in ten years. It goes on and on. We've got a debt that's equal to eight thousand dollars per person, but the plan is broken. We just can't go on like this. Enough is enough. Let's change. Please vote for me, number seven.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, I am Michael Beekin, I am voting for Royal Beach City Council. The reason I'm voting for Royal Beach City Council is a lifelong resident, I've seen our motels and our hotels go from full all summer long to where now all I see are vacancy signs. Our restaurants used to have lines out the door, and we used to have traffic backed up at every stoplight. We don't have that anymore. Lots of things have changed, some for the good, some for the not-so-good. I've seen our city steer away from the family-friendly environment that we once had that kept us safe, we could walk down the streets and feel comfortable doing it. I don't believe anyone would disagree that that's not the way it is today. I want to see these things returned, because I believe that's what made us great in the first place, and I believe we can be great again. We've done it before, and it'll be easy to do it one more time. If anyone has any questions after this is over, I want everyone to know tonight that there's two or three things Michael Beekin is going to do. And one of them is, if I impose any taxes, or if I impose any fees or fines, every penny of that money's going to stay right here in Royal Beach. I'm very appalled, I'm very appalled that a lot of the money we have, two-thirds of it, leaves our city and it never comes back. And I think that's become a major problem. I'd like to address these issues. You can't do it from the audience, you have to do it from the council seat, and that's why I'm running for city council. Thank you so much.
I want to thank y'all for Mr. Rambles putting us together tonight. We appreciate this very much. And my name is Jackie Corrigan, and I'm a lifelong resident here also. My family's been in the hospitality, hotel business since I was two years old, so I've seen a lot of changes. Whenever I was growing up, we never had any problems with crime on our streets, we ran around on the beach all day long, and our parents didn't have to worry about us. This day and age is not the same. We have to be very proactive in watching our kids and everything else that goes on around us, and we shouldn't have to do that. We should be in more family-friendly environment. And so our public safety is the number-one issue right now. And I just need to, um, have to excuse me, it's been a long day. But we need to bring back our family-friendly beach, and I would appreciate your vote on number seven. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Keith Van Winkle. I would like to thank the Southrend Republican Club for hosting this event once again, for each and every one of you here tonight. I would ask that you take a look up on this stage and see who's here tonight and who's not here tonight. The incumbents are not here tonight. And they each sent out an email, identical, stating why they didn't want to be here, because they had prior obligations of meeting greet with the identical email, same word. Ladies and gentlemen, they've been hiding from you, the voter, when you don't have a record to run on, you have to hide it. We're up here because we have a common rent, an interest, and that is to serve the public. We see the need of what's taking place in our city. The violent crime that has taken place is on the rise, and it's been going since 2018. I grew up here in Orange County, I'm a graduate from Commerce High School, and I know a little bit about service. I led a life as a missionary in my young adulthood. I served in Haiti, I've served in the Philippines, I've been in Russia. I know what it means to get down into the trenches of life and serve people who are poor and oppressed and who have no voice. The bottom line is this, this election is about public safety. And I'm asking you, please, don't be fooled by the scare tactics that you're getting in the mail. If you vote for somebody other than the incumbents, your property taxes are going to increase 400 percent. That is a lie, ladies and gentlemen. It's not true. So I'm asking you, put public safety first. It's about the direction of what kind of city we want to live in, in the 21st century. What kind of city do we want our children and grandchildren to live in? My name is Keith Van Winkle, and I would humbly ask for your vote on November 7th. Thank you, ladies.
One more thing, Mr. Van Winkle, I was going to mention that Mr. Ryan Wallace and Mr. Michael Lauer did send me an email this morning, around 10:30 to 10:40, 50, that said they would not be here. Greg Smith did tell me he would not be here a week ago, so he's at a function somewhere here in the market commons, but he's working to come over since he gets rid of that. So those incumbents will be here. Thank you. Let's get to public safety. Mr. Van Winkle just mentioned that. The question is, the Royal Beach Police Department and City Council just unveiled a seven-year plan to bring on seven officers a year for seven years. I would like each candidate to give me a critique of this plan, and do you think it will be a failure or success? And who wants to go first?
From the start, it's going to be a failure, because it's not going to keep up with the increase in crime if we don't get boots on the ground immediately. So, seven years, seven years, over the next seven years, sounds like a good plan, unless we start clearing our streets of, you know, if we're going to look at that for this, to clear the homeless, clear the vacancies, the drug users, the people sleeping in our bushes, behind our buildings, behind our businesses, we're not going to do it anymore. So I think we actually really need to increase law enforcement today, and get them into the communities, on the backstreets, and a seven-year plan is not going to keep up with rate if we don't get out ahead of what's already been permanent.
This evening, I forgot to have two members in thirty seconds to answer your question.
I believe that this plan is a setup failure. Seventy officers in seven years, that's not actually completely accurate, because it's only fifty-six officers in seven years. There are not all uniformed officers on the street, but I was thinking, an area like the market commons itself, for example, nothing but growth, a lot of growth is taking place here. The plan that they have created doesn't even accommodate our growth, our future growth. So, as time goes on, we're going to be out of officers again, seven years, we're not going to be able to keep up with what's going on. So no, the plan doesn't work. The magic number, I don't know. We need an hour, we don't have time to wait. I'd like to see seventy officers in one year, that would be the best option, not seven years.
I've been told to keep it simple, my files are right back there, I could go get my files. I have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that our police chief gave, and in it, I was interested to see it, tell us about our average daily population of 155,000, and then on the next page, it indicates how many small officers per thousand people you need, according to authorities. So I thought, okay, the next page is going to say what our plan is to meet that. So I turned on the page, because I really thought, well, here's a plan, many things will change, and I could be emerged, but sadly, the next page was about something else completely different. Toward the end of the presentation, then it went over the plan as far as hiring the number of people. Well, the problem is, just like they said, they're gearing up to meet the average daily population over seven years. So, folks, it's not going to change anytime soon. The Maryland Fried Chicken was just dropped. This is going to keep going on and on, and it's going to come out tomorrow coming. The overriding problem, and we can talk about this problem, is the crime problem. But how did it develop? Let's take a step back, what caused it? The cause is the desire to put heads on beds, overspending the money for safety, and we've just got to change, because that's just very cumbersome. So we need to put the money into things, instead, our deficit for the convention center and for the law field, combined that deficit, this coming year is over a million dollars. Our interest on our debt is over seven million dollars. If we get our finances in order, and we look for savings, we can pay for the officers we need right now.
The police department and public safety certainly has become a big package, and a package is exactly what it is. It's a whole presentation to the community, as well as the tourists and the people that view our city. The main thing wrong with the city plan that we have at the moment is, I believe, you have to have a psychological turn. Somewhere in here, we have to make a statement to the public, to our tourists, and to the community, that we've made a change that's going to be significant enough, that everyone's going to see it, as well as the law-abiding citizens, as well as those that are not law-abiding, and those that intend to come here and cause us trouble. We haven't done that. Seven officers is a drop in the bucket, that won't mean a thing. We know we all lose three or four officers a year to retirement, going to other locations to beat policemen. It's not going to matter, we have to do something different. In order to do something different, it's going to take money, and in order to do that, we have to generate some income to do it. Our city's budget is exactly perfectly balanced, just like it is. The money that leaves our city in this 1% chamber money does not come back. We lose about 60% of that money, it's sent to Columbia and it's gone. That money was sucked off of the city, those were the money we needed for policemen, we needed for roads, we needed for trash trucks, we needed for public services. Well, now we have a shortage of public services, and we have to make them up, one way or the other. A psychological turn has to be made in order to save 2018, and that's my purpose and my goal. Thank you.
I really think that our police chief made a good attempt of putting a plan together. Is it complete? Is it spot on what we need right now? Maybe not. We do need to hire more officers, we need to retain the officers we have now, and with that, we're going to have to come up with the money somehow to pay these officers. As everybody knows, we can only turn out so many officers per year, out of the state, out of the academy, and each city is only designated so many officers. Well, that's not, in our case, that's not happening. We need more officers, and they cannot churn them out fast enough to get them to our city. I would love if we could talk with our legislators and get on board with the cities on the east coast of South Carolina, and start another academy on the east coast here. That would actually filter into all different cities, because every one of these guys up in the east coast of South Carolina have the same problems, they're short of officers. And I think that's the only way that we're going to be able to meet the demand. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the city is fifty-six officers short as of right now. They propose a seven-officer plan each year over the next seven years. So if you're fifty-six short now, and you've got eighteen million visitors, according to the chamber, let's reject seven years, that in the road, how does that add up? Ladies and gentlemen, it's not working. I stand, and some may not like this, but I stand for our good pride, but we need 100 new officers on the streets, we need to pay them what they deserve, a fair wage, we don't need to hire people and send them to the academy. If you're going, if you've got a problem, you're going to go to the best surgeon. You don't want a rookie, you want to go to the best surgeon. So what are you going to do? You go outside of the scope, and you pay, you pay veteran officers from other states, who wouldn't want and love to live in Royal Beach? I mean, it's, ladies and gentlemen, it's not rocket science. We've got the money to pay for these officers, the money's there, we don't have, we don't have a budget problem. We've got a management problem, and we have priority problems within the management of the city. We can do better, we must do better. The city and the future of our city depends that we do better. Our best days are still yet to come, if we get public safety right. And as Matthew and Mike said, we've got a public perception problem worldwide now. After that viral video went to everybody, there's a perception throughout the world that Royal Beach is a crime-ridden city, and that's the facts, and there's not enough money that the chamber can gather up to defeat that. So, when you go to the polls, I'm asking you again, please, put public safety first. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I've got a question from a member of the audience, and I'm going to add to this question, because the Municipal Association of South Carolina just went to a seminar on public safety, and one of the things that was talked about was police officers need a pay raise. It was discussed by every city, and we had three different police chiefs that talked about it. And so, Mr. Flickler, Flickler Larson said that he feels our police officers need a pay raise, and what is your thought on our police force? And I'm going to end it up, what vehicles do you suggest to use to reduce crime in downtown Royal Beach? If you read the news last night, we, the Maryland Fried Chicken was robbed, and a man was stabbed, and then just last week, they arrested Frederick Calhoun, a bar machine for all kinds of drugs, $100,000 in drugs and $14,000 in cash, so I need somebody to speak on that.
I agree with our police chief, I think fifty-one is a good starting salary, somewhere around there, between forty-seven and fifty-one in that area, that's our salary, I think that's a good way to do it. I think State Trooper started out, I think at forty-six, and somewhere in that area. Now, what was the second part of that? Or me? What was the second part of the street part?
What are your thoughts on our police force, and what vehicles do you suggest to reduce crime in downtown Royal Beach?
I think our police force is trying hard, we need more police officers cleared, and that's become very clear. We need to just make sure our proactive police force, I'm going to go back to the presence of the community policing, that ability, because that's how police officers get relationship with people in their community, they get to know them, and everything, or something like that. When there's this rough deal in a certain community, the police officer probably already knows who's doing it. When there's someone that's playing drugs, the police officer probably already knows who's doing it. That's what I want to be back here. And the downtown area, we need to get some surveillance, we've got all these nice cameras all around the place, but there's nobody that watches. They just go back and look at them after the fact, after a crime's taken place, we need to make sure people, and then hide in this area, if we're here in, I was in Lower Wood Scottwood, somebody should constantly be watching the cameras in that area, somebody should constantly be watching the cameras anywhere around the city, where these searches places, or these sorts of things are taking place, at least hide in the urban areas, that stuff.
I'd like to see that we pay the highest rate in our region, so we can really attract people. We have such a problem right now, we're in a hole, so we've got to try to dig ourselves out. And looking at the actual plan, and I have that up there, if you want to look at it after the meeting, the PowerPoint presentation, you'll see that the patrols have been extended down to the south end, and I think that's why they came up with the Fifteenth Avenue South Drug Bust, because they're actually putting people down there now. But, when you look at the plan, you'll also see that their patrols are not extending west of Seventeenth. So that means that in the Brooklyn, Washington area, men of the states, other areas, even up on the north end, or fell to now Hassel Circle, where we used to have a house, that in a park there, there's a couple guys sleeping there at night, they're not going up there either. So it goes back then to not having enough people. We don't have enough people to do foot patrols, or even to get in a car and drive around. So, you know, we can definitely change when we have the bodies that are available to do it, and like this couple here that are going to the police training that we have, the citizen police patrol, are saying that the officers are going to continue to leave if we don't pay them more, so we could actually end up being in a worse situation than we are right now. This can't continue.
Ladies and gentlemen, perception is reality, and as I've been wanting to set up here already, our city has a perception that crime here is a major issue. We all agree that a city in Royal Beach should have the highest-paid police officers in the state. If we were to do that, we would be the number-one police department in the state. And as far as how do you clean up the area, and what vehicle you'd use to change these things, everything is a standard, folks. The way you cut your hair is a standard, the clothes you wear is a standard, the car you drive is a standard. Our city has a standard as well, and they've lowered those standards. They've allowed too many people to sleep on the benches, they've allowed too many homeless people to wander the streets, there's too many vagrants running around who just beg for a living. Our city has got to the point where they don't have enough policemen to do the minor police work, they stick to the major police work, and they overlook the things that they don't have time to do. It came to my attention the other day, it's been a long time since I've seen a cop at a dog hunt shop, and I had to think about that for a minute, but they don't have time to do that anymore. If you see a cop now, he's by himself in a car, and he has somewhere he has got to go, because he's already behind. We need to get back to the point we have a surplus of policemen. And in the plan that I'd like to see put in place, I'd like to have all the cops that we needed, and in the winter time, if we have cops that we don't need, then we could sub them out to other areas, just as we're borrowing cops in the summer. And I don't want a whole police force full of rookie cops, I'd like to have a police force full of seasoned.
Just like I think everyone has said here on the panel, that perception is key. Our perception right now is, of course, we don't have enough police officers, they're not paying enough money, they need to be paid at least, at least fifteen thousand dollars more, plus, we need really great benefit packages for them. I mean, everyone in this room, I'm sure, has been hit with the healthcare, you know, increases, and, you know, benefit packages mean a whole lot also to these officers. In my plan, I would like to see, we have, put a substation down on Southern Avenue South, I would like to see more substations. We need our officers to have places where they can kind of land, if they need to lock somebody up for a little bit, until someone gets there and takes them to jail and go home, so be it. We need a place for these guys to land, do paid work, and then get back out on the streets and do their job. We need to give them the resources that they need to do their job, and they need to be able to enforce the laws. If we enforce the laws, and our reputation would be boosted instantly. And I know that sounds a little confusing, but you know what? If we would enforce the laws, then people will, the word will get out that they're not going to take it anymore. They have stepped up, and we need not break the laws and get by with it. Thank you.
I remember as a kid, I used to go down to Danny Ashley's family's house down there on Whittaker Swash Drive, and the park, when I was young, it was clean, the swash was clean, the police were in and out of there, there was no vagrancy, no dirty needles laying around. You can't go down there now, folks. You've got, you've got people on the park benches shooting up, smoking dope, and doing god knows what else. I want you to ask yourself a question. If you're, if you're a family, if you're a police officer, and you go home to your, you go out on the job, you have a beautiful wife or a husband, and you've got two children, and you're driving down the road, and you already know that the city is short on manpower, and you see a group of people gathered on the corner, slinging dope, are you going to stop and confront this group of people? And possibly get stabbed or shot? Are you going to go by and do your own business and go home to your wife or husband and family that night? We don't have enough police officers on the ground, we don't need to add more substations, the old streets have to be that? Ladies and gentlemen, you can add all of this fancy stuff you want, we need to hire police officers, that is the endgame. I support adding 100 police officers, get down on the south end, take co-enforcement, go into these crack motels and make them come up to par with the city ordinance, or shut it down, because at the end of the day, that's what's being attracted to the south end. If you have low, low-income, not low-income motels that are just giving stuff away, that's what you're going to attract. And I'm telling you this because I used to drive a taxi in Royal Beach, and I saw the unedited version of Royal Beach at nighttime. Ladies and gentlemen, it comes down to putting boots on the ground, not substations, not fancy police cars, police officers walking the beat, getting into the community, and knowing that your city officials have your back. That's what That's what it's gonna take. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we have a group, I didn't hear that one. Oh, he had it.
I just didn't wanna go first with that. Um, yeah, I think the best vehicle, uh, our officers can have are treadable boots. If, uh, they were in, if they were a block away from Myrtle Beach Police Department, they could have prevented that, that robbery at the Maryland Fried Chicken. I truly believe that. If they were in checking park, they could have prevented that incident. I do believe that. That's quality of life policing, that's boots on the ground. You will, when I lived in New York, what they did, they called somebody, you got a two hundred and thirty-eight dollar ticket. You had a choice, pay that or go to a quality of life class, and you didn't have to pay that ticket. But if you didn't do either, you, you had a warrant out for it. Now, do our police currently have enough people retired to implement that type of program? I don't believe we do. Until we get our hiring under control, pay them what they're worth, attract quality, attract veterans. We had Phil Webster, Chief of Police, has retired from Northern Myrtle Beach. They seem to have a agenda. He's local, call him in, have a conference with him, talk to him, see how he, he approaches it in Northern Myrtle Beach. Same side, same thing. How are they approaching issues that may send our office? I think they've done a job, us, we're kinda ugly cousin right now, and that's unacceptable. Again, that goes back to how we protect ourselves nationwide and in the region. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, has anybody spoken on that recent?
Yes.
Okay. Next question is, uh, especially all all-talented. And, uh, there had been a, uh, basically a bombardment of, uh, mail, and that's what a rabbi has been saying that y'all wanna do away with the, uh, homeowners rebate plan. I have a two-part question. In your opinion, does the TDF work for the city of Myrtle Beach if it does stay alive? And are you in favor of removing the homeowners rebate part of the TDF tax plan?
It's working, right? I think it's working really well for the chamber. They've gotten over what a hundred and fifty million dollars in ten years, and they're poised to get that money again. They're paying their top five executives over a million dollars. This is more than the top five people with the city. I mean, really, who is, who is running our city? I, this is, this issue is what got me involved in running. I knew it was coming up for renewal, and I thought, you know, really need to look into this, and I had the time to do it. And I came to realize just how much, well, ultimately, that if that money could go to the city instead of to the chamber, that's what we need. Because what I did was I realized that the accommodations taxes are two percent, they're collected statewide, and so that would allow us to compare counties and even cities across the state. And I thought, okay, if I'm looking into this, I wanna find out if it is in fact working, it should show me that the accommodations taxes collected in our county should be much better than everybody else, it should blow everybody else out of the water, because we don't have these millions to invest. Well, it turns out that, no, not really. Um, our, comparing Myrtle Beach alone, just the city, our ATAX collections went out thirty-nine percent, whereas statewide, they went out fifty-one percent. So, this law was put into effect with no means of measuring results. All the chamber has to do is to write a list online, say, here's what we spent, this is what it was reported, what it was sworn out, wonderful, but no, it's not working. What is working is people love the tax credit. I own a home, I love the tax credit. Wallace gets five hundred dollars, he said he loves the tax credit. So, we have been successfully rocking it, I'm one of them. I think we should give the money to the city and give the tax credit.
I believe that the tax credit should stay with the residents. I, I don't believe that should be removed. However, there's an issue that comes in with the rest of the money. And just imagine this, if, if, say we ran a business and we each collected a million dollars, and we put that money into fund, and we've got fifty million dollars. Well, right away, the first thing someone wants to do is take thirty of that fifty million and send it somewhere else to another group of people. Would that be fair? That's what we're doing. Our money, when it goes to Columbia, does not come back. The only thing that stays here is, is the, is the twenty percent that goes to pay the taxes for the, for the citizens that live here, and there's a little bit more, probably ten percent comes back for infrastructure, the rest of that money's gone. We don't know if it's gone. You don't know where it is, they've been asking for, for audits, that money's gone, you don't get it back. What we need to do is, is focus on what we can do. And what we have to do right now is live with this thing to the best of our ability. The TDF, whether you like it or not, it's one of two things. It was either written so cleverly that it couldn't be dissolved, or it was written so poorly that it didn't have an end date or a time to it or, or, and to expire. So what we have to do is work with this thing to the best of our ability and stop these monies that leave our city and don't come back. That's the problem we have today. Every penny collected within the city should stay within the city, and that's not what we have today. Thank you.
I really think that the TDF has benefited our area. A lot of these people that have relocated here, um, especially the minority states, they pay at least ten thousand, over twenty thousand dollars a year on their property taxes. And they've come down here and hardly paying a small percentage. You know, people, people relocate here because we are a great place to live. The TDF has worked for us. The money that is generated, that goes back into, um, advertising for tourists, if we don't have tourists here, our property taxes will go up. The money has gotta come somewhere, and it is necessary for us to keep it in place. However, I would not be, um, opposed to, at some point in time, putting on referendum if our community is educated on it. There's so many things, floating information that's floating around out there, bashing on it, this, that, the other, everybody just needs to be educated on it, and then we can put it to a referendum and make it be fair. Thank you.
I think people are pretty educated on TDF. Um, the city gets, the chamber gets a pile of money, okay? Twenty percent of that goes to the property tax reduction, okay? And in that twenty percent, you're only getting about eighty-two percent of that, of that twenty percent for the property tax reduction. I say, take the twenty percent, give the property owners a full twenty percent, which means a hundred percent of the twenty percent, this way the chamber's not getting the rest of the city, give it back to the property tax owners, and then you take the rest of the money that goes to the chamber of commerce, and you split that up, which comes to about eleven point five million, give that to the city, and let them hire police officers. So it's a win-win for everybody. The chamber keeps part of their money for that, for the advertising of the city, the residents get the full twenty, the full one hundred percent of the twenty percent instead of eighty-two, and actually the profit is going dead. So next year, you'll probably see a, your tax reduction actually go, go a little, you'll be paying a little bit more on your property tax because of the revenue that's going down. So I say, give it a full twenty percent. The chamber keeps half of the pile of eleven point five, the city gets eleven point five, it's a win-win for everybody. We can add a hundred new police officers, our community becomes safe, and everybody wins. It's a pretty simple thing to me. That's what I would do. Thank you.
It's not that easy.
Has everybody spoken?
Oh, sorry.
No.
It's not that easy. We're having to deal with legislatures in Columbia. These folks in Columbia, you know, they really don't care if they get, we get the money back or not. If we, if we go to Columbia and tell them, we want all this money back, we stand to lose every bit of this, everything we've gained so far. So, I don't agree with that.
Can, can we go, who's gonna be next?
Can I, I, I need to rebut that, but.
Good, I'll let you rebut. Please go ahead.
Brooklyn. Remember that?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. TDM, TDI rolled out in two thousand and nine after the oh eight financial loss. That was their intention to advertise their way back into business that they lost. Um, that's a bad idea, but again, twenty percent of that also goes to go back to infrastructure. That's how they built the border wall, that's how it was funded. Now, down that, they all hard escape, we can have that money go through our police force. Fund it, get it money, get it into the community as quickly and as effectively as possible. Alright.
Uh, this is everybody put in place without a referendum in the first place, the voters have the right to vote on a tax like this. Second off, Jackie is right, to the extent you're not just gonna walk into Columbia and get your money back. You're not gonna do that. It's gonna take time, you're probably gonna have to work with the governor, you're probably gonna have to work with your legislatures, you're gonna have to, because you know what they want here, I'll say this straight up. They're gonna be trying to make you a deal with casinos here, or they just gonna say, no, just keep it like it is. Because legislators want casinos, because you know who pays everything in the state? Myrtle Beach. We're the revenue source for the state. When you need a road paint in god knows what, Herschel County, Myrtle Beach is paying for that. Ain't nobody else, Myrtle Beach. And to keys is, I'm, I'm both these sides here now. We do need our money back, we need more than just police officers. As I say, we need police, we need infrastructure improvements, we need tons of more things to come back into the city. But, the only reason that these incumbents are sending this mail stuff out and saying they're gonna get rid of this is because they know that they have no chance at winning this election again. That's all. And the only reason they're gonna say that is because they gone on and on and off and all this stuff for all this time now. But that's the only reason they're doing it. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Marine fundamentally don't understand government legislation.
It's the people, the taxpayers' money that goes to Columbia, okay? Uh, somebody who's been involved in, in the process and the legislators for a local party, having been in Columbia, understand the fundamental workings of it, she fundamentally is misinforming you. The fact of the matter is, if you go to Columbia, you meet with the governor, you meet with our state delegation, they will, they will take that money. The state is already spending money to send police officers to Myrtle Beach. It's, 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 it's a very small change in the law. The governor will do it, he'll be happy to do that, to rid the burden on other communities who are sending their police departments down here. So, it's just a fact, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Have everybody spoken on that issue?
What, what are we doing with this rebuttal?
Did everybody speak right now? We're gonna go, we're gonna go like, move it. Yeah. Uh, I'll ask you to do one minute, you go.
Well, I was just gonna say that as far as the local delegation goes, we need to go to them and ask for our money to stay here instead of going to the chamber. And if they won't do that, then we need to elect local legislators that will work for us instead of the chamber.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's, uh, I'm gonna go to a article that was written on October twenty-sixth, uh, making commensurate with these some news. And it refers to the South Carolina Supreme Court is considering making local chamber of commerce, including Myrtle Beach area, chamber a substitute Freedom of Information Act, as it hears a lawsuit against the Hilton Head, bluffing chamber of commerce. Uh, I'd like your comments, how you feel about this Supreme Court case, and if it rules in favor of the freedom of information, that, what will you do in your next chat, if you're active?
Well, the, the, to make one thing very clear, the chamber, all the monies that we're talking about are taxpayer money, which are directed to, to the chamber. And by all means, if it's taxpayer money, who should not know where their money's being spent? That, that's ridiculous. And as far as, as far as what to do about it, I believe the Supreme Court's gonna decide for us. And by all means, that money should be accounted for every minute. Thank you so much.
I would have to agree, because if they're dealing with taxpayer money, everything should be transparent, whether it is with the chamber, or whether it's with our city government, state government, or federal government. Everything should be transparent.
Yeah, I, I fully agree with that. I, I support that a hundred percent. Taxpayer money should be accounted for. I, I would also call on a forensic audit for the chamber of commerce, even if, if, if this doesn't pass, because after, at the end of the day, it's your money, you should know where your money's going. The chamber should not be doing the bidding of legislation in Columbia. They are a private entity that is to promote business, not go and do bidding for the city taxpayers and let the taxpayer know what they're gonna do for the, for the citizens. That's not how that works. And somehow, in Myrtle Beach, that's got twisted. So let's get back in, uh, let's get back to the basics of what government should and should be doing. Your, your state delegation, your local, uh, council should be working for you. So I fully support a forensic audit on the chamber, and I hope that the Supreme Court does make that, um, come to fruition. Thank you.
Yeah, I pretty much agree. The chamber needs to be audited, independent, outside audit, not be friends, not the same people that have been running the audit for years. They need, it needs to be somebody they don't know so we know that we can trust it. That just goes back to transparency and the government. It's not private money, it's public money that they gather, and we need to know where it's going. Thank you.
I agree a hundred percent. Every last thing that taxpayers pay needs to be audited, needs to be made sure. I think we all agree with that on the stage. But on a quick note, if it's Ray Wallace or Lou, whoever's rolling, sitting up for phone calls right now, would you please stop calling, because I'm in a debate? Thank you.
I certainly agree that it should be audited. I looked at every single expenditure from two thousand and nine all the way through two thousand and sixteen. I called an attorney, I asked about a class action lawsuit regarding these taxes. I was told that because this particular attorney won a lawsuit against the city about appraisals, the state legislature in this state got together and made a law that you cannot file a class action lawsuit in our state if it involves taxes. This is, this is unreal. Tax money should not be spent for advertising. The whole concept is convoluted. When you look at how it started, it was started to pay for advertising for businesses. But hello, if you're living in Red Bull and you're in an area that, that produces BMWs, should taxpayers be advertising bars? Not really. Now, if our state wants to do some institutional advertising, let the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism use money to bid out, and they can bid out to different companies and get this done, instead of the chamber getting the money and bidding out to who knows where, and then even if they're audited, we don't know what money's gonna come back to the chamber. So, you know, as far as the individual expenditures, though, like I said, I looked at every single item they've spent. And personally, I don't see how putting a banner at a ball field in Atlanta that says "Myrtle Beach" on it is gonna bring us more money. And then, one last thing is that apparently, since it's not helped us grow our business compared to other areas that don't have it, what has happened? Well, a lot of us think that, that companies like the hotels and such don't have to spend their money advertising because the taxpayers are doing it. And that's not right.
All right, let's continue on. Uh, this is a two-part question, because it's got, I've got two parts of it that has to do with economic development. Uh, number one, do you, you support eminent domain, the taking of private property by government, and the redevelopment of downtown Myrtle Beach? If you do, state the reason, yes. If you don't, uh, no, state the reason and hit goodbye. And also, the second part of that, uh, let me sit real quick. How do you rate the job done by the Downtown Redevelopment Corporation over the past 10 years? And your reasons for rates it?
Oh, this is easy. Absolutely not. We don't want any, any eminent domain. If we do eminent domain, it should be for a road. But by all means, it doesn't matter if it's a successful business, an unsuccessful business, if it's a big business or a small business. If that's the business people afford their heart and soul in, and that's their life earned savings, they deserve the right to see it through, whatever comes. And as far as, is, uh, the second part of that question?
Uh, how, the second part was, how do you rate the job done by the Downtown Redevelopment Corporation of passing the state's original commission?
The, the, the DRC should be dissolved yesterday. I was in the room 25 years ago when Downtown Redevelopment started. We met at the top of the Flatiron Building. For those of you that don't know where that is, that's the building that used to sit where Nats Plaza is today. John Singleton led the meeting, and it was the first half before Broadway, the beach was built, and we could see the city growing, and we needed to do something. The DRC was formed out of a knee-jerk reaction to help that downtown area re-develop and revitalize, and somehow, that morphed its way right into parking meters and parking restrictions. Until now, it's turned a stranglehold on the whole city and given a bad attitude and flavor to our tourists and locals a lot. The DRC has to go. And as far as their purpose, the purpose in the beginning was revitalization. And revitalization can be accomplished in many different ways. We don't need a private entity telling us how to run our city. Thank you.
I do not believe in eminent domain myself either. Uh, it is only, needs to be used during, um, a necessity for our citizens, for example, a road, or a, we don't have dams here, but for a dam, something that's deemed necessary for our citizens. So, other than that, I don't believe in eminent domain. Um, kinda like what Mike said, I think the DRC a long time ago was put together for the right reason, however, I think it's gotten off track. I think, um, we shouldn't, DRC shouldn't be in the business of redevelopment as much as it should be as helping small businesses and people come and grow in the downtown area. That is just that simple. Thank you.
The answer is no eminent domain. That's big government theft, it, it, plain and simple, it's a secret. Plain and simple, that's government bullying their way, telling people what they do. My granddaddy told me when I was a young boy's son, government may be your uncle, but it ain't your daddy. So, it's time that the citizens wake up and, and, and take their government back and hold it accountable. They work for the people. And somehow, we lost that way with our elected officials. Uh, downtown redevelopment, total disaster. Total disaster. If you see what's happening downtown, it's, it's infested with crime. You go down on the sidewalks, there's bubble gum all over the sidewalks. Ladies and gentlemen, we didn't have that when I grew up. The streets were safe, the community was clean, the people were friendly, and we had a thriving downtown. It's not so thriving anymore. But we can, we can fix it together. We can fix it together. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, use, use of eminent domain, that was, um, kind of a cowardly approach to dealing with, uh, your citizens and your neighbors and, and friends, people you've known, known for a good long time, and the city, the sort of disaster to further what they believe is a good agenda, and it's not. You don't need the children's museum and water downtown, you need better ideas. So, use eminent domain was just an ugly act, and, uh, we need both people out and allow it to happen. And, um, as far as the DRC, uh, it started with good intentions, I'm sure, but I don't see any evidence other than they're just stopping on for themselves. Again, where's it going, and what's it gonna be used for? So, again, it needs to be dissolved, reformulated, maybe take another shot down the road, but as it stands now, it, it's not working, and it needs to go.
I say no eminent domain unless it's for a road or a household, those are the only two things that I can give a domain it's used for. Secondly, no for the library. We don't have money for this whole dam and all, especially the bulk buildings, I don't even know what they're doing with all this. As far as the DRC goes, if the DRC was really passionate about downtown redevelopment, David Seabock would be out there cutting the oak trees and found that a tree and all this stuff, and trim it out and making it look good, and he'd also be pressure washing the sidewalk, set the item out on his Jaguar. That's all.
No eminent domain, you know, I just posted a article that said the saying that roads said, you know, that's not set in stone. You know, the library, the museum thing, that, that's just an idea, where, you know, we don't have, we don't even have a funding for that, we haven't voted on that. Well, of course, we all know why that came up. They came up with that because they were outed as far as having plans to buy, they were in fact buying property behind our backs secretly, because, as you know, we have no transparency here. A lot of secrecy, so absolutely no to that. And as far as the DRC, it's kind of hard to talk about the DRC without talking about parking, because parking is a lot of the money that they get. Um, I personally don't think that the DRC should have been ever set up as a separate entity, as a nonprofit. If we were gonna do things as a city, the city ought to do it. We don't need all these different pots of money with people that are way aside involved in the city, making these side deals. There was a fellow that bought a hotel here, and he was working outside in the front, and this car drove up, and the guy rolled down the window, and he said, "You owe us for hybrid parking." And the fellow said, "What? Who are you?" Well, it turned out to be David Seabock. And he explained that because there was a little strip of land that the city owned where the people parked, that he was gonna have to pay them for parking, but he didn't know anything about it, and it came up at closing, you know, so he asked, "Well, what if I don't pay it? I don't know anything about this." He said, "Well, then we'll put our parking meters." And you know, if you go down the, the area downtown, my office is at 16th Avenue, if you go toward the ocean, you'll see lots where obviously there used to be a mom pop hotel, but they came in and they put a meters up, and instead of hotel, it closed. So, as far as the parking goes, I think we should have gray parking. And, uh, have the money that is income from parking is used up by the expenses of taking care of the parking. So, let's have gray parking, bring people back, have restaurants, changing rooms, and then we'll have families that are coming back to the city.
Everybody's open?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, we thought of it.
You hear citizens speaking about transparent city government. It's spoken from Washington to the little towns like Lawrence, Southside Beach. If you're elected, what will you do to ensure more transparency in Myrtle Beach city government?
That's a loaded question. Okay. Um, I'm all about transparency. Um, as a lot of y'all know, uh, I actually have been sat on city boards for several years now, and, um, I always believe that there should be more transparency. I don't believe that our boards and committees interact enough. I don't believe each board should have their minutes, um, given to other boards, so they know what's going on in the minutes and everything else. I don't believe that we should be having a city council workshop on one morning and then voting that afternoon. I don't think it gives the citizens enough time to digest what is actually going on. I think it should be changed to different days. That would be one reason, the one way of changing it. Again, like I said, every committee that, that is part of the city needs to be transparent and out there, let the citizens know what's going on. Thank you.
Transparency keeps your elected officials honest. And that's the bottom line. How many people are happy with their legislators today or their representation? They've got probably the worst rating ever. So, what I propose is something that I've been fighting for for many years now. City council has their council meetings at 2:00 in the afternoon. Most people are working then. People work for a living, they don't get off until at least 5:00. And every other single municipality that I know, their meetings start between 5:30 and 6:00. Everywhere. You should know what's going on in your city. And the people who work for you should have the common respect to give that to you and let you know what's going on. So, if I'm elected, I would push for a 6:00 meeting. I will have monthly meetings, coffee with your councilman, so you'll know. I'll go break up the city into four different areas and meet with the people of our city. But most importantly, transparency will completely follow, I believe, when you break the city up into districts. We need to have districts, individual districts, that people can vote. This way, everybody that's living on the north end isn't on council, and the south end gets the boot. We've been facing that for years now, and it's time that the south end has equal representation. Transparency, let's open it up. My number is 843-467-3175. Call me night or day. I'm here, even if I'm not elected. I'll be here to fight for you as I've been since 2008, when I set out on this campaign. Thank you.
Well, if I'm elected, you know, after I wake up from shock, I will, I will definitely, uh, wanna change council meeting times. I think it's a good idea to have a little bit of breathing room for the work, between the workshop and vote. And, um, changing some of the decisions, that's what we work for, and we'll work for, that citizens can partake and be heard first, before you make a decision, not afterwards. I know they're filmed, they're, they can be seen on our local access, but also, we haven't seen them in quite a long time. So, being vocal, being seen, being heard, that's important to you, and that's what we have to do to make sure you trust us before you put any of us in office. Thank you.
I think, uh, transparency is a big deal. Council meetings should be at 6:00. Workshops should be on Thursday at 6:00, Thursday before the council meeting on the Tuesday. Plenty of time in between anything, draw stuff, know how things are gonna go out. Also, there's no debate that takes place, everything, when they come out there to vote, they already know how they're gonna vote. I mean, not that either takes place in city council chambers anymore, except for yes or no, but the two things that happen are they'll get on and work, which, that's fine here. But anyways, on top of that, meetings at 6:00 are needed to livestream on the local channel, and our committee, our minutes need to be updated on the website. They haven't updated since 2015, so whatever was happening in 2013, I guess, is more relevant than what's happening right now, which is, I don't understand that. Also, single member districts do need to be put in place, four single member districts. And like Keith said, there should be something monthly, or there should be town halls, and you should be able to talk to that person every month, and they should be able to have the council chambers, material and put them on. Thank you.
I agree with that, what Buckland said, and I would have to add that what I'd like to do is, if it happens, establish a relationship with a lot of people on Facebook. I'd like to continue after I'm elected, and so, I would be at a workshop then, and I would let you know what's going on. I'd look at the numbers, I'd read the ordinances. I don't care if there are 30 pages, we need someone who can read and understand, and which reminds me, I forgot to say, I hope you're forgetting to say, I have, I'm the only candidate that's running with a master's degree in management, and I own mine business and have it 30 years. But as far as transparency goes, you know, having meetings later, um, having single member districts, but also, I don't know if I have a chance to mention it, it's all mentioned now, term limits, that I vow to serve no more than two terms.
Transparency kind of comes back to integrity. One, one lesson I learned from one of the people that come through your life, you never forget, is, she said, "Everybody's got a tab. You're either adding to it or taking away from it." She was a waitress. She said, "Everybody's got a tab. You're either nice to people, you do the right thing, or you're not nice to people and you don't do the right thing. But one day, it's gonna catch up to you." And right now, the crowd, we got, I believe, it's caught up to them. You can't do these backroom deals, folks. You just can't do them. The back door to City Hall has got to be closed. When I started running for office, you start going around and talking to people, and go, "Oh, man, I'd love to vote for you, but I can go to this person right now, and I can get anything I want in the city." And I go, "That's okay, thanks, because you don't need to vote for me, because I'm not doing that." And I went to someone else's house, and we were talking, they said, "What are you gonna do when people come up to you and they want you to help them do something?" And I go, "Well, I'm gonna carry them right to the front door of City Hall and show them where they need to go." They go, "No, no, you've got to help." I'm like, "No, that's not what I'm running for office for. I, I don't want that kind of burden on my shoulder, I'm not gonna do it." And transparency comes back from two things. It is back to member districts, and it's back to term limits. If you can't get done what you need to do in eight years, you need to move out of the way and let someone else do it. Absolute power's corrupting, and absolute power's absolutely corrupting. And there's just too much going on under the scenes, this is too much money, and you can't operate that way, because it's going to happen whether you want it to or not. The only way you can protect it is to be as transparent as possible. Give those term limits in there, give those member districts, so people are held accountable for what they've done. Don't give them enough rope to hang theirself, that's a mistake. And as far as that back door to City Hall, I just don't believe in that, I never have. I think people need to be forthright and upfront, because it's in everybody's best interest to make the best decision for our city. Thank you so much.
All right, we're gonna get to economic development, and, uh, this is kind of a generalized question, but I'm sure some of y'all have business in, uh, the experience. What would you do to bring in better and higher paying jobs and careers to the Myrtle Beach area?
Well, I'll tell you, I kind of was pretty impressed with the presentation that from the gentleman I came off in Charleston about bringing tech jobs to the city. Doesn't take infrastructure, doesn't take deep works, doesn't take rail, doesn't take any of that. What it takes is a building, some cubicles and some high-speed internet. And Charleston threw their tech industry, they got over twenty-two thousand new jobs in downtown Charleston. They got salaries about eighty thousand dollars. Wow. Can you imagine what that would do to our city? It would be huge. So if we can do that, promote that, get the downtown redevelopment, clean up, clean that down, clean up the blighted areas, I think if traffic will flow, people will start coming in. You put that smile back on our city and say, "Businesses are welcome." You know the city of Myrtle Beach has the highest business license fee in the state of South Carolina? Why would anybody come and do business in the city if they're being taxed? You know, at the end of the day, that two to four thousand dollars could make you or break you. It's about the bottom line. Our city's hurting right now. We need good jobs. And we're only one natural disaster from ending our economy here. Because we are tourist-based driven initially. We have to diversify. We have to go after, to new jobs and get people in here. And I think if you put a practical team together, we can do it. It's been done. It's done in Charleston. It's done in many other places. In fact, the people that started in Charleston, they have now based down in Beaufort. They've got a sister community down there that they're expanding. So I think if you think outside the box and start promoting that, it would be huge for our city.
Well, there are people who are smarter maybe that'll figure out how to bring in bigger industry. The Economic Development Corps is one of them. I know, just read today about a company called Greenland, I believe, is bringing three hundred and seventeen jobs. So people who can do that, that's the need to do that. I'll support that in any way I can. But what I'd like to see is more incubator business. We have spaces that are open and all through the downtown area. We can work with, we've got culinary institute right out back here. I'd like to see an incubator kitchen developed somewhere in the city, preferably downtown, so that people can come in, start their own catering businesses, or rental space, rent four-hour blocks. You can have a food truck, or hopefully we'll get a food truck service gone here shortly. They can prep what they need for the food trucks and it cycles, it's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. People can start a small business. They can meet up with other light-hearted individuals, just know what this money can bear of. And they can come together and perhaps pull resources to start their own restaurant. Something more interesting than what we have. So we can do that. You can have rental gathering spaces, reach out to the Coastal Carolina University or Arts Department. Those kids can produce work and sell it online, but not to everybody. If you can develop a rental space, top gallery, that they can showcase their works, that would give them another boost. That's again, is trying to promote small business. So that's what I'd like to see, more incubator small business. And watch that grow, I think, if you're interested.
So on Monday, me and Mike were meeting at a downtown restaurant, and we were standing out in Nance Plaza. And I literally opened the restaurant and I said, "Would you mind if your food trucks parked right here in this plaza?" He said, "No, I wouldn't care." I think it would actually propel it, help downtown. You're running a whole food truck thing. This whole thing is a disaster. If you want to have a food truck here, man, bring your food truck here and maybe you're able to handle it. I don't have that. I'm going in the direction, a lot of people don't want to talk about this, and I understand why, but I'll be, I'm tired of it. We're bringing these students from across the ocean over there, over here in our city, who work there in the summer. They live in these slave corporate type things. They get paid nothing. Many of them are already made it back home to do sex trafficking and other things right there. But I can tell you something else. I'm not really, I don't really like that. Because you go into our streets in our community, you've got youth that are being sucked up into the street. They're getting on this drug stuff, they're selling drugs, they're getting into these gangs and stuff. How about we stop the whole worrying about, or freaking out people and let's worry about our community? Let's get our kids into these jobs. Let's get our kids. And I wish I could, I was trying to be as nice as I can, this is nothing against it, but I'd rather see somebody in my community as a lifeguard on the ocean than somebody else that I can't talk to. I'm just saying. So if I'm around, I want to be able to hear, you know, somebody I know from this community coming to save me. I'm just saying. But that's what I'd like to get back to. And I understand these businesses are trying to save money. That's understandable. But you guys understand, these kids, these youth are the future of this city. So we got to get them into the workplace as well. Thank you.
I too like Martin Fry's plan for the IT incubator program. It would cost maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars to get started. And there is that expert in Charleston that can help us, just like it's helping the center in Beaufort. So I think it's worth a try. I can't guarantee a hundred percent that it'll work, but wow, it does. I mean, if it does, this is a game changer. We're talking about hundreds or thousands of jobs at eighty thousand dollars each. That would be awesome. And I also like Ed Carey, what he says regarding getting out of the way. You know, let's get out of the way of businesses located here. Let's be welcoming. I like the story that Mike told about Ocean Isle, there was a business that opened there and the city sent over a bouquet of flowers. Myrtle Beach, we send over code enforcement. You know? Let's be nice and welcoming and, you know, and really go out there and communicate with other entities like the Regional Economic Development Authority. We need to share information. I, one of the things I do in my business is I compose resumes for individuals. I thought I would do this extra step with this fellow that had experience in manufacturing, I thought. I'll provide some free information about the various manufacturers that we have in the city. Because we have manufacturers in the city. We have them in the county. So I called, I called the Chamber of Commerce, I called the city, I called Regional Economic Development. Can I get a list of manufacturers and what they make? We don't have it, nobody has it. The same thing I ran into back in the nineties when I invented what I called a hearing thing. And I wanted to have a manufacturer in South Carolina. I called the Department of Commerce and I tried to find out who in South Carolina could manufacture this hearing thing. Nobody could help me. I mean, hello, don't we know what businesses are here? You know, can't we get that information together so that when businesses want to locate here, we can say to them, here's what's available, you know, who might be able to use, not only manufacturers, but other service businesses as well.
For today, you want to talk about bringing business to this town? This is my forte. This is real simple, folks. It's not hard at all. The same things that defeated the food trucks is what's defeated the business in the town right now. There's two things you don't want to ever see show up at your property, and that's David Seabock and Aldi Murphy, Aldi Smith. If either of them show up, you're going to get hit with fines, penalties and restrictions. You can't function that way. When you turn around and you look at that oceanfront over there, you start looking down the street. We don't have millions, hundreds of millions. We have billions of dollars worth of real estate standing there. These are the nicest motels on the South Carolina coast. There is no excuse that we don't have money flowing in and out of this city at an exponential rate. We've become so accustomed to relying on that Chamber of Commerce or people telling us what can and can't be done, we forgot how to do it for ourselves. Number one, all you have to do is start with something simple. If we could streamline some things with the C A B to where people could come all the way down Highway Seventeen and start repaying their buildings and redoing their signs without having to go through a one-month or two-month approval, you'd see everybody start fixing up their buildings. Simple. If we remove some of these impact fees from restaurants where you have to pay two to three hundred dollars a seat up in a restaurant, we could start opening up little venues all throughout the city instantaneously. If the city would go down here on these sidewalks and put sidewalks between Highway Seventeen and the oceanfront, create avenues for all those tens of thousands of tourists to start walking up the streets where they did feel safe again. And it comes back to public safety. We've got this perception we've got to fix. We have to make a psychological turn. Once that turn is made, the floodgates are going to open right up. Then we'll have to manage the venues that's coming. This isn't hard. You can look at the food trucks and find the same reasons why they're not coming, and those same reasons will apply to everything else. We have to get the city, the economic engine cranked back up. I always tell people, you know, we've got, we've got an eight-cylinder engine running on four cylinders. And that truly is the problem. And if you go down on Highway Seventeen on the north of the south end about four o'clock in the afternoon in the summers, all you're going to see is lines of traffic leaving the city. There's nowhere to eat inside Myrtle Beach anymore. All those tens of thousands of tourists that are here every day, where is there to spend their money? Thank you so much.
As I said before, I'm in hospitality business. However, I think we need to diversify our jobs. For the longest time, hospitality has driven this area. But we also need to bring back and keep our young people that live here and travel here. And that means creating good paying jobs. I'd like to go back to what Matthew said about the students that come overseas to come work here. And there's a reason for that. Unfortunately, again, in the hospitality business, no one wants to work anymore. People have been rewarded for staying at home instead of getting out and getting a job. And until that changes, we have to kind of rely on the student, foreign students. They come over here, and that's why you see a lot of them here. But back to the main topic. Our jobs need to stay here. We need to keep our young people here. We don't have an interstate yet. We have a rail system that is going through, I think, refreshment. So we don't have that. We have to rely on either life manufacturing, tech jobs, anything that does not require a large plot of land. And we need to try to bring businesses in here that would tap into that. That's the only way that we're going to be able to grow our jobs outside of the hospitality sector. Thank you.
Look, I respect what she said, I really do. But I grew up here and I worked in these little ten and seven dollar an hour jobs. I had to, I had no choice. Okay, let me tell you. I respect what she did, it's all about money, what it's all about. You save money, then you're going to bring them in. And secondly, like she said, you want to keep your kids here, you want to bring them back. How are you going to keep them here if they get stuck on the streets stealing drugs or addicted to drugs or shooting people? That's all I have to say. Some thing. I want your folks to...
He's on the... Keith, you answer, right?
Have you spoken?
Yes.
He did? We're switching questions now.
All right, I'm going to go to the next question. This still has about economic development. Just recently, probably a couple of months ago, I attended a meeting right there in the Stray Hall with Myrtle Beach Regional Economic Development Corporation. And they told us about jobs that were available to the investment manufacturing, which already Georgetown debt, this building, the place we're sitting in, has that down. For example, forty-one thousand dollars was the average starting pay for a person graduating in investment manufacturing. In aviation, which we're sitting playing on the airport, it was seventy-one thousand dollars. What would you do, elected, to look into that providing jobs in what I'm talking about? Aviation and investment manufacturing for the city of Myrtle Beach?
Again, I have to say, there are people that are smarter than me and that can bring that type of manufacturing. I can't go out and find a building. But we can put together a workshop to try to figure out how to, own to Charleston, we could bring in, I'm sure they need something that we've got, whatever, small park or that would go to them. But again, as far as, what was the center part of the pay scale?
Forty-one thousand.
It was forty-one thousand for average person graduating investment manufacturing, seventy-one thousand for aviation.
Sounds good, sounds hard. I'm really diggers. I'm not going to stand up here and try to talk about something. I don't know. And I know that y'all, I don't know, I'm not going to pretend to know. So I'll pass.
As far as bringing larger industry to Myrtle Beach is really hard because of all the taxes and fees that we're going to put on these people. And we should be offering more, send up to P T I Institute, it's a place where we should be sending our kids. They should be going there and they should be learning how to be engineers on airplanes and everything. We have the ability to do these things, others to start by, no stop. Going through all this governmental bureaucracy stuff, let's just unleash the beast.
I need to find out more about this issue as well. You know, I know that we have the park here that is for aviation, but as far as I know, it seems to be like one of those other parks that we tend to develop in the county where they build this park and it sits there and nothing ever occurs. I think they've finally, they've got something out there, the VA Center, Administrative Center, that's to go there. We need to try to work with the Regional Economic Development Center, as a city, working with the county in that, to go out to trade shows around the country, talk to companies. I really don't think we need to go to China to tell people to the best here. Now, the mayor's job is supposed to be administrative only. I mean, it's not supposed to be administrative. It's supposed to be more a bigger head type thing. And I don't see how it could possibly be legal for the mayor to be going to China to get business to come here to buy private industry, it's ridiculous. So let's work with other entities. It's not an easy situation, but I think we can do it if we all work together.
As I said before, one thing I think the city kind of got lost on is sports tourism. We've relied on the Chamber of Commerce and at O nine and O ten, when we started looking at other avenues to bring people to the city. We went into sports tourism and we went full bore. And it's done a great job, but there are things that have fallen through the cracks. We're one of the few people, you know, this is one of the largest runways in the state. You can land anything they have on this runway. That's something other cities don't offer. We have the ability for all this acreage area that was set aside for the industry. It's never been dealt with. No one's probably ever tried to go out and court these businesses here. And when you court them here, one thing I learned with Broadway at the beach, in the inception, all they talked about was critical mass, critical mass. You have to have enough there so that the thing will take on the life of itself and it will function. If we have to go offer up some incentives, or we have to give free space for a few years, just like how Hard Rock, the Hard Rock building that used to sit out there at Broadway at the beach, they had free rent for ten or fifteen years. That was the draw that brought the rest of the people. If we have to create incentives, they'll have to be done. Diversification is the only way to have a year-round economy and to have year-round employment. Thank you.
I would have to agree with Michael, bringing incentive plans for these businesses to come here. Actually, I happen to know the woman that is... Actually, I happen to know the woman that is Department of Commerce in Columbia, and they've already been actively, uh, working with companies to come into South Carolina. There's no reason why we couldn't, with her help, also bring companies to Myrtle Beach area. She also works with the school systems, because when these companies come in, they need skilled labor. So she will go to the schools itself, tap into what their labor needs are, and they can go ahead and start training these people. So I think it's a collaborative thing as a city, we need to work with our State Department of Commerce and our schools to, to help it cultivate and to put good-paying jobs here, small businesses. Thank you.
Yeah, I tend to agree one hundred percent. We have to diversify our economy here. But one thing I'd really like to talk about is how society has really stigma, put a stigma on people who go into the trade industry, such as mechanics and plumbers and electricians. These are good-paying jobs, and somehow, we've lost our way by saying, if you don't go to a four-year college and get a degree, a liberal arts degree, a Greek philosophy, something's, you know, something's wrong. And that's what's happened, not just here, but throughout the country. We have stigmatized a two-year training degree. Those are good-paying jobs, electricians, plumbers, master carpenters. So somehow, we've lost our way. If we can give back to that, these are the people that build our cities, our communities, people that we trust. But again, you know, I'm, I'm gonna agree with Brooks here, that, the question on, on that is, that's beyond my big brain, I don't know anything about that, but I'd be willing to research it and do what's best for our community. Thank you.
Okay, we're, we're about to go over, but I'm gonna do one, one more question. This is gonna be my last question. We have a lot of retired, retired people down here, and those retired people are looking at you up here wanting to be elected, and they want to know, are you gonna protect their quality of life? Are you gonna keep our streets safe? And what I need you to do is speak directly to the retired people out here, the people that are retired and also fixed income, social security, or retirement program, and tell them what you're going to do to make sure their quality of life and streets of Myrtle Beach are safe when they drive them.
Well, for those that are retired that have moved here and everything they're like to this community, for one, I do feel bad for all the negative things. Good things, we've got a beach, we've got all these good entities, and I hope they should use them. What I'm gonna do is we're gonna put police officers on the streets, we're gonna begin working on our outfall systems in the ocean, keep our ocean clean, and we're gonna keep on adding these things, we're gonna offer incentives to businesses to bring them here. But I'm gonna go back to the other thing also, we're gonna make sure that your children and your grandchildren also have good jobs if they're here with you. This is the perfect place to live, as long as we begin to work and to move forward and get rid of the past, get rid of these incumbents, move forward, bring a new vision and new ideas, and that's the best way forward, and that's what we have to do. Thank you.
I'd like to say to the residents of Department of Commerce and the people that are retired here and are happy and everything's wonderful and it's a beautiful place, watch out though they're not in parking gear coming to street view. Do not look past. So it goes back to my mind, to money, because it takes money to have a safe city, it takes money to clean the beach, we're gonna get outfalls built. The problem is, going back again, is that this, this leadership at the city council level and also at the management level have failed because they're doing the wrong things. Managers do things right, leaders do the right things, and our leaders are not doing right, because they're too busy trying to put heads on beds, they're talking about building more ball fields, they're talking about borrowing twenty-five million dollars more, and our taxes are just gonna keep going up and up and up. And the people, okay, we're getting a tax break if we have a residence, but if you own a business here, if you have a second home, you know, you're paying those full taxes. Not only that, they're not four percent, they're six percent. So we need to get a handle on what we're doing with the money. I think one of the things that we should do is to have someone in the city responsible for crossing department lines. If you've ever worked in a corporation and each department operates separately like it does in the city, and everyone's very protective about their budget, and they'll also tell you, if given a chance, that probably their department is the most important department of all the other departments. But anyway, what we need is maybe someone at the assistant manager level that would be able to go into everybody's books and start with zero-based budgeting every year. Look at contracts, they're not being utilized fully. Look at personnel. I think another thing we need to do is to make sure that we have the right people who are employed.
What do you think?
If there's an opening, we need to put that opening out into the public and not hire somebody's boyfriend or somebody that happens to be a renter there's a lot. We need to get the very best people to work for us, save as much money as we can, keep our costs low, clean the beach, and have a great place for retired people to live the rest of their time.
Well, for the seniors and those people that choose to come here for retirement, there's two things they really want that I understand. One of them is, is they're really happy with the tax break they get on their residence, and I'd like to see that stay. Everybody deserves something for living here and having to put up with the tourists that we do. The other thing that they deserve is they deserve to be living in peace, and they deserve good honest police protection. One thing that bothers me more than anything else is when people come here, just like senior citizens, it's not long before their children or their grandchildren are visiting, and then they need to take them somewhere to entertain them. And I don't wanna hear anybody being ashamed of the boardwalk or being ashamed of the downtown, that's gotta stop. We need to make our city a place where everyone can be welcome and you can feel safe to take your children and grandchildren and go back and get ice cream where you did twenty years ago, or go get pizza, or go out to eat, or ride around and look at things that are nice and attractive without having to see undesirable elements in your face. The question is reality, and if everything looked like Disney World, we'd all be happy. And when you come to Disney World, there's an expectation when you get there that this is a nice place, it's safe, and it's a family environment. And I'd like to see that expectation come back to our city. It wouldn't be hard, it'd just take a little initiative. We'd have to upgrade the police department, we'd have to increase some amenities, and we have to remember that this is the vacation capital of the world, and it's something we all should be proud of, and we wanna make sure every visitor here is proud when they leave to say, I came to Myrtle Beach. Thank you.
For the retirees that have moved here, I appreciate you living here, I appreciate you relocating here. This is the most wonderful place that you could ever live. I've, I've lived your own life, so I, I tend to think that. I will promise you that we will improve on our public safety. We will drive the crime out of our streets. We're gonna keep our water quality, we're gonna keep an eye on it to make sure that it does not harm anyone. We're gonna make sure that you have a great quality of life living here. We're gonna keep the infrastructure up to date and current. My stepdad was a retired Navy military. He lived on fixed income, just a ton of, tons of those on fixed income. So we have to keep things livable, people have to enjoy their quality of life and not be price gouged. We need to keep everything obtainable. So we appreciate you living here. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for being here. I get a little emotional, because I grew up here, and I've seen my childhood memories ripped away. Many of you moved here because you saw the quality of life, low taxes, a safe community. It's not that safe anymore, folks. The quality of life is being ripped right away from us. I grew up just about ten minutes east of, west of here, in Como. I grew up with a mom who worked three jobs. I grew up poor. But I settled off to college and then became a missionary to serve the poor, to serve the oppressed, the people who were in need of help. And our city's in need of help right now. So, and I wanna thank the senior citizens and the people who are retired, because it's because of you, it's you that built this country, that created the fabric of who we are today as a people. Hard work, stability, faith in God, love of the family, and the protection of our community. That's what this election is about. We've lost our way in the community here. We've lost our way because our streets are not safe. Trucks, prostitution, corruption has barnstormed our city, and that's not fair. It's up to you and I to make that change. We are the change. And at the end of the day, ladies and gentlemen, whatever your decision is on Tuesday, November seventh, please go vote, whomever you vote for, please vote for public safety. We must preserve and protect our community at all costs. And I hope that at the end of this election, that this campaign that I run has been based on serving you in the best interest of our community. I ask for your prayers. I hopefully ask for your vote. Please vote for Keith Van Winkle on Tuesday, November seventh. I promise you, I'm not asking you to trust me, I'm asking you to believe in me, as I believe in each and every one of us right here, because we are a family, a community, and together we can change the course and direction of our own. Thank you and God bless.
I believe the question was, senior citizens and safety. What we need and is what we keep a heart on is that we need more officers on the streets, especially in the neighborhoods, backing the community, backing the retired communities. They come here wanting to live out a good life, and I think our current council and mayor have failed that, and we're about to clean it up. That's what I intend to do, and I hope you vote for, for me on November seventh, but we need to ensure your safety so you can enjoy a little time. Thanks.
That concludes our debate. If you would, I'll stand up and I'd like to give these, all six of these folks that showed up to our debate, a big round of applause. The chairman, the chairman, the chairman of the city of Myrtle Beach, it's an honorable thing that they do. The polls will open at some block, I believe, on November seventh. If one of these candidates, you wanna vote for him, please go and cast your vote, for him or her, whoever it might be. And remember, tell all your friends and all your neighbors to vote too. Myrtle Beach is a good city, and I've been here all my life, I wanna see it get better. Thank y'all for coming out for the day, and thank everybody for coming tonight.
I hate the poor new people, poor.